All right. Good evening. This is the December 4, 2024 Cottage Grove City Council Meeting, which I am calling to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. The next item on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda. We did have a sign up sheet out in the entryway and nobody did sign up. So I just want to check, is there anybody that's here in the audience that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close. Open forum and council will move to five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Thede, seconded by Councilmember Cambada. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is presentations. We do have two this evening. The first presentation is the Public Safety Board presentation, and we're recognizing Panamint Capital, or as we like to LSP?
That's great.
That are here. Yep. And so I think I'm going to kick it off to yourself, Julie, to go up there and start. And then council, if you want to come, let's go down in front on this one, because we can also organize with them.
Yes. I apologize for reading, because if I don't, I'll ramble and I forget what I'm here to talk about. Could be my trip. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and I saw a corner. There he is. Yes. Welcome. Tonight, we're the Public Safety Board. These three lovely ladies and myself are part of the board. And a lot of people see us but, or see our name, but we don't, they don't know what we do. And actually, what we do is we're a nonprofit citizens board that works with the Department of Public Safety and, excuse me, through the police liaison officer, Ryan Pierre, and the fire chief to help promote the partnership between the citizens of Cottage Grove and the Department of Public Safety. To provide a safe community for our citizens. Our mission is to provide financial support for equipment, training, and programs to enhance the safety and provide crime prevention and safety information to the citizens of Cottage Grove. In order for us to do that, we fundraise and accept donations from businesses in our area. When we fundraise, we see the patches, the police patches. We have a member of our board that designs and does, excuse me, the breast cancer awareness, autism awareness, the vets memorials, all sorts of different patches. We sell them, challenge coins we sell, stuffed animals, the sparky dog and a canine dog that represents all of our canine officers. So in order for us to get extra money, businesses support us. And we've had several in the past few years that have donated generously. Our purchases have been the speed trailers that you've, speed trailer that you may have seen on 80th or 70th, telling you to slow down, other speed signs, thermal imaging for the firefighters, protective masks and hoods for the firefighters, pet chip readers, and other items. So what we have received over the past 10 years from Kent Riplander and his company, LSP, I don't know if everybody knows where that's at, but it's over by 3M, and I would guess 99% of Cottage Grove doesn't even know it exists, but it's over by the 3M Camelite, and they're their own entity out there. So they've been donating, and we've been purchasing canine dogs for the city of Cottage Grove. So it started with Blitz, we got Gunner, we got Scout, and then we got Odin. So all of our dogs have come from the help of generous donations from LSP. So this year, Odin, he did not have a ballistic vest. He was not able to go online and purchase one because he does not receive a paycheck from the city. So he's only given a Kong toy and accolades from everybody. So with the help of LSP, we purchased the ballistic vest for Odin so that he's safe during his shift at night, because there's a lot of bad guys out there that want to hurt him, along with some of our officers. But now he's protected and we're happy about that. So what I would like to do is introduce Kent and thank him publicly for the 10-plus years of donations from their business. So thank you, Kent.
Thank you. Just quickly about us. We're, like Julie said, a lot of people don't know we're here, but we're a power plant. We supply power to XL Energy and independent power producer. And then we also supply steam to 3M. And thank you, guys. And I guess what I'd like to say is, you know, thanks for everything you guys do, Canine Unit, the Police Department Chief. And I'm glad that we work for, I work for a company that supports the mission.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Officers Matt Sorgard and Canine Officer Odin. And just a few months ago, they competed in a national competition for canines. And so I'm going to have Matt. Yes, please. Just say what you want.
All right. So we attend our national competition, which is a patrol dog one. I won't go into it. It's our annual certification down in Louisiana and Baton Rouge over about six days of training. We competed against 67 dogs from across the country in things as obedience, apprehension work, article, location, suspect finding. And we ended up taking second overall out of the 67 dogs, losing to our trainer and the guy that trained both of us and from Washington County. So and then we took first place in our obedience and apprehension overall combined scores for that. So it was a good run for us. We enjoyed it. We look forward to going back next year to Southern Florida to compete again. So I think that's everything, right? Want me to cover? Okay. We'll see. I lost the Yetter by four tenths of a point, which if you know the scoring, it's a lot. I lost two points for a healing thing. So that, and that was my fault, not his. So we'll see you next year. But as far as for the ballistic vest, obviously, thank you. For those that don't, aren't aware, he's assigned to the SWAT team with me. So that's why it's green. So he does go on other deployments throughout the whole county, so not just in Cottage Grove. So.
And we just want to thank other citizens of the community that do purchase our stuffed dogs, our challenge coins, our patches. They're all available up at City Hall here to come in during business hours and purchase them. And at some events, we are selling them to help keep in the funds going so that we can continue to purchase items of need for the city of Cottage Grove. So thank you so much. Yes, they will be inside. Yes, tomorrow night, there will be a couple people from our board that'll be inside the building here. They'll be selling the patches, the challenge coins, Sparky, their little stuffed dogs. You can see a couple of them in the window across the way on your way out. Odin and Scout are the only dogs that we have left because Blitz, we don't have. He's been retired, and Gunner retired last year. So all his dogs have sold out. So now we just have Odin and Scout dogs. So thank you so much.
And thank you. I'll just shake your hand. Obviously, you guys have done a great deal both for, obviously, the Public Safety Board here, but city of Cottage Grove through economic development and things like that, too. So we're real happy with the support that you have continued to provide for us over the years. And obviously, we're excited. And like I said, maybe next year will be first place. And I will say this, after seeing him chew on that toy, I don't think I want to be on the end of the receiving from him. So as he's looking at me, no, let's. So again, thank you, and thanks to the board for all that you do for the fundraising. And if the public, whether you're watching or in the audience, if you are interested in donating financially to the board, reach out to myself, one of the council members, or you can look them up on the, well, you have a Yeah, Facebook page. That's what I thought. So you can look up on the Facebook page to see and what you can do to help fund these types of things that support. Or, yeah, there you go. You can also join the Public Safety Board. There you go. All right. Thank you all. Thank you for being up here. All right. We'll let them kind of get out there so that the next gentleman that's going to come up here and join us, the dog doesn't run after you. So next here is, one of the things that we get to do in the city Cottage Grove is do presentations for both Boy Scouts Eagle Awards, but also Girls Gold Awards. And tonight, we've got Cameron here, Rexstead, Rexstead, did I say it right? Cameron Rexstead, that is joining us here this evening because we're celebrating the fact that he is another Eagle Scout from the city of Cottage Grove. And so I believe, and I'm going to look there just to make sure troop, three, 286? 286. Okay, so 286. And just for the public to be aware, one of the reasons that we put so much focus on this is due to the fact of the giving to the community. Obviously, growing up, whether you're in a Boy Scout, getting to the Eagles level, or Girl Scouts into the Gold level, you see a lot of public servants and public service people, electives and so on, that have had that opportunity. I've been lucky enough, as my, one of my council members here, our family, we have Eagle Scouts or Gold. There we go. And what's really neat about that, to see that, is we also have out on the hall, and I think I might have saw you peeking around the corner there, is there's a wall out there that we list, and we put up every single Gold, Girl Scout Gold Award winners, and every Eagle Scout Award winner from Cottage Grove. And it goes all the way back as far as we can, we can see and you can follow the, and check it out there. So like, my son's up there, two sons and a daughter from Dave. And so this is your Oh, are they? So same one, same as you. There you go. So mine was 777, just to put it out there, because I know they're both pretty active. But in this particular case, we want to thank you for the great work in getting to this level. And if he knows, I was joking with him earlier. I mean, look, I have to look up to see this guy standing next to me here. But we do want to present to you today a plaque that just says, Cameron Rexstead, congratulations on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout through Troop 286 Cottage Grove, Minnesota, presented this fourth day of December 2024, from the city of Cottage Grove, Myron Bailey Mayor. So on behalf of myself, the council, all of our staff, and the citizens of Cottage Grove, congratulations. If you want to, you want to do the handshake? I told you, be ready for him. So of course, what we like to do to kind of end the presentation this evening is we always love to hear what the project was. That, for those that don't know, there's usually a big project that they do before they actually get to attain the Eagle Scout Award. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to hand it over to Cameron and let him tell us what his Eagle Scout project was.
Thank you. So back in May, I had about like 25 helpers come out to the Cottage Grove Cemetery. And all we did was kind of like this, let's say this is a gravestone. We just edged around the perimeter of it, and then we brushed off the top to make it look nice and clean. We did a couple hundred of them. And then, like, some of them, you couldn't even like see it or tell that it was a gravestone. So it was a pretty cool transformation. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right. Does mom and dad want to come up for a picture? One picture here? You get that chance. No? Come on, Dad. Awesome. Thank you again. Thank you. Good job. All right. Two great presentations this evening. That's pretty awesome. All right. Next on our agenda, and for the public, this is probably the longest consent agenda that we've had that I can remember. And just for the public to be aware, if there's something on consent, what we do is it's usually been already reviewed and such within, by the staff and the council with no real concerns. If there was concerns, which I will offer the opportunity for council, if they wanted to pull anything on consent. If not, we'll just move to approve and then move on with the meeting. So I will ask council, is there anybody that wants to pull anything off of consent for separate discussion? Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Olson on consent. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Garza. I'm going to get all the way to the end. Like I said, it was a long one. All right. Any other discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. So if you are here for anything that was on tonight's consent agenda, all of those items have just now been approved. Next is eight on our agenda, which is eight A is to approve, uh, disbursement or paying the bills. Motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next this evening is, uh, the nine, which is public hearings. And we do have a public hearing this evening. Uh, it is, we have one and it's the public, uh, I'm sorry, it's the property tax levy payable in 2025 and adoption of the 2025 budget. And our finance director, Brenda Melanowski, is going to walk us through this. So Brenda, welcome back again.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Um, I have a brief presentation tonight regarding the property tax levy and budget before you hold that public hearing and adopt the resolutions that relate to that. First of all, uh, this is for the public to let everyone know that we've been working on this budget that's in front of you since January. City Council, uh, this year you actually had five budget workshops regarding the budget. And so thank you for your time, um, as you, uh, went through each piece of the budget. It's never an easy process, um, as all these, uh, needs of the community come forward. So thank you for that. Um, our city staff, especially our department heads, our city administrator, countless hours, uh, on all parties as we look through all those, uh, needs in the community and prioritize the needs and what we can fund, uh, within the straight constraints that we have. Budget accomplishments, uh, here with the 2025 budget, uh, we are able to continue to pro- provide those same exceptional level of services, uh, that we have to our community, uh, not limited to those police, fire services, our parks, recreation services, snow plowing, street services, those sorts of operational type needs in our community. Uh, we continue to show a demonstration of stewardship of our capital assets by including the replacement of not only our capital, uh, but our city infrastructure that we've identified in our, uh, capital improvement plan and in our financial management plan. Uh, we maintain the distinction of an employer of choice. Uh, we had contracts that settled for 2025 and 2026. Those financial obligations are included in the budget in front of you. Uh, we're providing managed growth and staffing positions needed for our growing community by including a few new positions in our budget. Uh, we're meeting our debt service requirements, um, in the property tax levy. We're paying those, uh, payments of those principal and interest, uh, payments, uh, that we've issued in the past, whether they're for pavement management projects or to build things such as our, uh, central fire station. Uh, we're establishing an HRA levy for the first time in this budget, and that will provide funds, uh, not only for housing, but for redevelopment in our community. Um, our property tax levy history here is shown on the screen. Uh, it's important to note that this is a component of our city tax rate, uh, that we apply to an individual property. And so we take this city property tax levy and we divide it by the tax capacity. And so here's a history of that since 2014. Uh, for 2025, we're at 26.1 million. Our tax capacity for 2025, as you can see on the screen, uh, that's the second component that, uh, we use in, um, calculating our city property tax rate. Um, it's really net neutral for 2025. However, I would like to point out that, uh, were we not growing and had new construction in the community, that would have went down for 2025. So the City of Cottage Grove is fortunate that we're a growing community or that tax capacity actually would have went down for, uh, 2025. So when we take that property tax levy, divide it by the tax capacity, we come up with the city tax rate. Uh, for 2025, that's 37.177%. As you can see, it's consistent with what we had back in 2021 and 2022, 23 and 24. We had some large appreciation in existing property. Um, homeowners had sometimes 20% increases in their market value valuation, um, on their property, which drove that down. And so now we're, uh, back to where we were, uh, in 21 and 22. Property tax levy, uh, details, uh, that 26.1 million dollar, uh, property tax levy, it is a 12.98% increase. The majority of that increase is, uh, in our general fund. That's our chief operating budget in the city. Uh, that funds our our police services, our fire services, our parks, recreation, uh, street, snow plowing services. Um, on the general fund side, uh, we've got a budget of 28.4 million dollars. Um, as you can see, since the general fund does those operational type services for our community, whether it's the police, fire, snow plowing services, when we provide those services to our community, uh, we're not sending them a bill when we go to a fire call or a police call. And so we need to generate revenue, uh, to fund those operations and we fund that through property taxes. So the general fund is funded by about 76% in property taxes. Uh, since we are a growing community, license and permits, um, are a large, uh, portion of our budget, 8.33%. And they, uh, help run our building inspection department and the other, uh, departments, uh, that are out, uh, with those new home building, uh, projects. Um, on the expenditure side, we're also at, uh, that 28 million, 446,310 dollars for 2025. So as you can see, it is the same amount as the revenues. We have a considered a balanced budget. Since we provide those services that I talked about, whether it be police, fire, snow plowing, uh, through personnel, we say we're in the people business. Uh, the general fund 76, 70% of it, um, is those per- are those personal services. Um, and then we have contractual commodities and, uh, our budget contingency. If we look at the general fund expenditure for the last five years, you can see that public safety, so our police and fire, uh, is the largest component of our budget, uh, just over 48%. Uh, public works, which is our streets, uh, forestry and snow plowings, about 19% of our budget. Our our general government is about 12.76%. Uh, then we have parks and recreation, just under 12%. And then community development comes in at 8%. And that's been consistent over the last five years. Our median home, um, in Cottage Grove, uh, decreased in value by about 4.2% from 2024. And so for the 2025 budget, it has a value of about $354,000. Our residents, our community, our property taxpayers received proposed property tax bills, uh, in the mail in November, um, with the budget meeting tonight, uh, if they had questions about the City of Cottage Grove budget. That median home, he, they did receive a property tax bill proposal of about $4,344. It's important to note that the City of Cottage Grove is just one component on that property tax bill, uh, at 29% of that bill. In addition, there's the Washington County portion, uh, that is about 18% of that bill. And then the school district, about 49% of the bill. Uh, based on the budget that's in front of you and the property tax levy, uh, these are the impacts, uh, not only to the median home, but for other sample properties that we look at here in the community. Uh, we did a 10-year financial management plan back in 2023. Uh, in that plan, we threw all the operating costs, current operating costs and projected. Uh, we looked at our current debt, our future debt based on, uh, pavement management projects and street projects that would be done in the future. We looked at replacing our capital. We need about a hundred dollar increase on that median home per year, uh, was the consensus that came out of that financial management report. Um, so based on the property tax levy and budget that's in front of you, uh, that median home, we are within that target, uh, at $58. Uh, because we like to look at, uh, not only know what that median home, but other, uh, homes in the community, uh, look like, uh, there's four other properties that we track. Um, and because their market value may increase or decrease at different levels, and that's evidenced on here. Um, if we look at the median home, uh, that went down 4.2%, but property one, which about had the same valuation last year, uh, only went down 2.29. So it had a property tax impact of $88. And so it depends on that market valuation, uh, change, uh, that's set by the Washington County Assessor's Office on what that impact is from year to year. We also compare to other cities in Washington County to see how we are doing, um, against those other cities. And so here on this screen is a chart and it shows the median home values in the other cities in Washington County with their tax rates, and it compares, um, each community. Um, no different than last year, we're second lowest. So we are able to provide excellent, uh, value to our citizens, um, at that $1,261. And there's only one other community in Washington County, uh, that is able to beat that number. We also compare to median homes in growing cities over 40,000 in the metro. Um, and so we also compare favorably on this metric. Uh, we are, uh, the third from the bottom. There's only two other cities, uh, when we look at the median home in those communities, uh, that can provide city property taxes at a lower amount. Uh, lastly, our 2025 tax rate, um, we compare favorably there, too. We're, um, not at the bottom, but there's only four other communities that are lower than the City of Cottage Grove on that city property tax rate. Then, uh, lastly, on that median home that went down about 4.2%. Um, if instead of paying, uh, property taxes, um, on a yearly basis, if they sent the City of Cottage Grove, uh, check each month, they would send us about a hundred and $5. Uh, we would take that check and so that's no different than a cable bill or a cellular, um, a cellphone bill, a utility bill. Uh, but we would send $45, uh, over to our public safety department to pay for our police and fire services. Uh, public works to pay for, uh, snow plowing streets and forestry would get 1478. Uh, general government would get 1369. And just a reminder, general government really supports those other functions, whether it's through paying employees or doing accounting for employees or administering those departments. Uh, community or parks and recreation would get $10.94 to maintain our parks. Community development would get $1.47. They generate those building permits and so that is why that's a little bit lower. Uh, debt service to pay for pavement management projects in the past or building the central fire station is about $15.54. Capital equipment, $1.29. EDA and HRA would both get 55 cents and then we have our budget contingency of about $1.7. That is an increase from 2024 of $58 or 16 cents per day for those services. Uh, reminders, uh, for our residents, um, through the state, there are a number of property tax relief programs. Uh, there's either the, there's the regular credit refund and that's based on income. There's a s- special property tax refund program. If your property increased or your property, uh, taxes increased more than 12% and at least a hundred, uh, dollars, it can't be because of an improvement you did on your property, but, um, and then there's also senior citizen or disability property tax deferral programs. The website is on the screen, the phone number's on the screen. Otherwise, please just contact, uh, me here at the city. I'm always happy to talk to residents and citizens, uh, regarding those programs and help them navigate those programs. And then most importantly, to watch for those valuation notices that come out from Washington County in the spring. They come out in April, um, on there, it lists open book meetings. If you have a question about your valuation, if you think that, uh, it's wrong or have any questions, those are the meetings to attend to, um, understand how those valuations, uh, are valued on your property. Uh, with that, council, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, uh, thank you, Brenda. Once again, another fine job by the staff putting together the budget. And my guess is maybe what, 30, 60 days from now, you'll be starting on the next, uh, 2026 budget. I know how that works, but, uh, council, do you have anything you would like to bring up? Uh, Councilmember Olson first.
Thank you very much. Pardon my voice, Brenda, I'm fighting a little bit of a cold. Um, first of all, again, I echo the mayor's thank you to you and the staff. You know, we started this budget process, uh, actually in January, um, when we had our strategic planning session as we do every year. And, uh, I can tell you, um, for those watching at home, uh, the the number was quite a bit higher at that point in time, but of course, we didn't have very much information either. Uh, and as the year kind of transpired, um, you know, we've met, I guess, a dozen times or so, maybe more. And every time we've kind of refined and refined and refined based on the information. There are a couple pieces of information that I think were really critical this year, and I was hoping you might be able to just share a little bit about that. Um, so you mentioned earlier the value of property, the value of someone's home. Uh, there was a state law change as it related to, um, property valuations that, um, probably those with a valuation higher than, I think it's 513,000, saw on their property tax statement. Could you explain that to some degree, just so that people kind of know what that was?
Yep. Uh, yeah, there was a change in, uh, the homestead market value exclusion. Um, and so, uh, properties, um, lower value properties, um, received more of a change in that, um, advantage, uh, on that proverb program. But some of the hu- higher value properties, uh, did not. Um, and so that that had an impact and a shift. And we were, we were watching that, too, um, especially the shift, uh, from residential to commercial. And so the residential properties saw a little bit of a savings, but those higher value properties, um, saw some of those increases more.
And I think we saw that in the chart, uh, with the properties that we benchmark every year and it's the same properties year after year after year, so it's very consistent. But, um, I noticed that in some cases, uh, properties that were under that roughly $500,000 mark, uh, they actually saw a decrease in valuation this year. Um, and and, uh, you know, the the teeter totter went the other way for the folks that were above that 500,000 or 513 mark. Now, if they're concerned about that, if they if they feel like, hey, you know what, I don't know that that valuation's right, what should they do about that?
They should contact the county assessor when that valuation notice comes out in the spring. Um, if they think that their 2025, uh, proposed property tax isn't calculated right, welcome to contact me and I can work them through that calculation and, um, help them understand that calculation, uh, for 24 versus 2025.
Yes, okay, good. Because certainly, I mean, you try to apply it evenly, but but as the valuations, whether it's a commercial business or or a residential property, as as those fluctuate, you're going to see a fluctuation in your overall taxes, uh, for every one of the taxing districts that's, uh, applied on on the tax statement. So that's good. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the HRA levy. I noticed that, um, you know, you had that on your chart as well. And, uh, maybe you just tell the the public at home what we chose to do this year with HRA versus EDA.
Yes. Uh, last year, so current year, 2024, for the EDA levy, we had $275,000. Um, during the financial management process, uh, council consensus was to start doing a levy for HRA for housing redevelopment in the community. Um, instead of, uh, leaving the EDA levy at 275,000, uh, we took half of the EDA levy. So the EDA levy, uh, for 2025 is 137,500. The HRA levy is 137,500. So the net effect is the same, no change from last year. We're putting it, uh, in an HRA levy. The HRA levy actually is more transparent, uh, to our property tax owner because it will be a separate, uh, line on the property tax statement. It will say, uh, City of Cottage Grove, HRA. So our property tax, uh, payer will understand the property taxes that they are going, uh, to pay the city for those housing and redevelopment activities.
Thank you for that. And I know that that, um, is something that, you know, several of our neighboring communities have done for quite some time. And I think as our community, um, continues to grow, uh, we have portions of the community where there's, you know, some aging infrastructure, those kinds of things. And these HRA, uh, funds can sometimes help us to, um, you know, maintain a little bit older infrastructure or it can help us, you know, repurchase a property that might be blighted or things of that nature. So I'm glad that we're breaking that out so people can see it much more transparently. But the good news is it's budget neutral. It's it doesn't change anything. Good. And then the last thing I wanted to ask is, you know, coming out of 2020, uh, we all remember, um, probably not very fondly, the the challenges of COVID and, uh, all the rest of it. Um, you know, there were a lot of recovery funds that were, um, provided to communities, either by their their states or, uh, by the federal government. And we're sort of at the end of that now. So, um, maybe you could just speak briefly about sort of when some of those funds sunset or have sunset? And then what that means going forward, because certainly we still have to maintain to maintain those things that, that were initially paid for.
Yes. And I can specifically talk about our one-time public safety aid. So at the end of 2023, the City of Cottage Grove received about $1.7 million from the state. We're no different than other communities. What Cottage Grove is doing is we are doing a staged approach of using those funds. Instead of using those funds in one year, we're using it over a three to four-year period so that when those, those funds are depleted, that we're not having large spikes in our property taxes. So that is, you know, the importance of that long-term financial management plan that we do here in the city. One of the things that we didn't want to do is to have large property tax swings from one year to the other. And so we're doing that with those one-time public safety aid funds.
I appreciate that. With, you know, battling inflation and the cost of goods and all that that everybody else does, taking that measured approach has been a godsend, that, that 10-year financial management plan. Of course, that's what gave us our AAA bond rating as well, and you can't get any better than that. So I guess we're doing something right. But I'm glad to see that we're, you know, taking that year-by-year, step-by-step approach rather than what I've seen some other communities do, which is they, they spend it all at one fell swoop, and then suddenly they're stuck with it and they got to pay for it the next year. And there's only one way to do that, and that's through a massive increase in property taxes. And for a community like ours that doesn't get local government aid to any large degree, as opposed to, you know, our friends in St. Paul Park who are right below us in Washington County tax per capita, you know, we, we need to be very judicious and very careful. And we always are. But, you know, we can't count on those big influxes of money from the state or the federal government to come our way every year like some other folks do. So I think that makes us a little better when we sharpen our pencil. That's all I've got. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmember, yeah, Councilmember Kamada.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your breakdown of our budget expenditures, you listed our cost of debt service.
Mm-hmm.
And I know since we, since our bond rating was upgraded, we probably haven't had an opportunity to, to convert those bonds into lower interest bond sales. But do you have a rough idea of what the long-term net savings will be on, on having that, that addition or that upgraded rating? I know in, in projects that we've put out for bonds since we've gotten that rating, did we notice a, a notice or a, a large enough or, or noticeable drop in the, the rates that were being offered to us?
We did. I think we experienced that with that 2024 bond issue that we did at the beginning of the year. And so those interest savings on that debt issue for 2024, so we've got two bond issues now underneath us with that AAA bond rating. And so those interest savings that we saw when we issued debt in 2024 was including, included in this budget in front of you, so in that $15.54.
And then additionally, I just wanted to say thank you to you for this year-long process that is our budget, but also to directors. I know we asked a lot of our specific departments in terms of having them bring to us items that could be postponed or deferred. And as, again, in January, there's a lot of unknowns. And as the year kind of played out, we were able to assess kind of what budget line items needed to wait till next year and what we could bring into the fold for this year on a priority basis. And that's a heavy lift, and I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this.
Yes, thank you.
And I did, I just want to, I did look tonight. There are about $125 more dollars on that median home that could have been added for requests. And so we did do our due diligence, city council, city staff on that. So yes, another $125 on that median home.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, Council, it's funny, that's the first time I've heard you actually say that. I mean, we always look at those, and we say, no, no, we got to wait on that. And then to hear what that dollar wound is quite, quite astonishing. Councilmember Bethidi.
Yeah, I guess I just want to make mention that, that, you know, I totally understand. I tend to be a little bit of the, the one that tries to, to, you know, well, let's just face it, I'm, I'm kind of cheap. My, my dad, you know, raised me to be pretty, pretty frugal. But, so there are some, you know, definitely some things, and, and I know that, you know, a lot of people feel that, that burden of, of increases, even though we're saying, well, it's not a very big increase, when you get about 10, you know, smaller increases, it all, it all starts to add up. So we do try to make an effort to, to hold the line on, on some of those taxes. You know, some of the, the costs have gone up. We've seen some, some increases in, in labor costs and things like that. And, and like it or not, that's the biggest, one of our, you know, it is the biggest percentage of, of, of our costs and things of that nature. So, so even though sometimes it doesn't seem like we're holding the line on things, I think we, we do have some, some pretty good data that says that we, that we, you know, sit pretty well in comparison to, to other cities and so forth. And while I'll be the first to say that I'd, I'd love to always see my taxes stay the same or, or go down, you know, it's, it's kind of inevitable that, that, you know, the costs continue to, to go up. And, and I do have to say that, that, you know, a lot of these folks in the city here kind of put up with me in, in terms of, you know, doing some things and cost justifications for equipment and things like that, that, that I know are kind of a pain to do sometimes. But I think it does give good visibility, and, and I think, you know, that, that, that there is a, a lot of effort made to, to try to, to, you know, be more productive, you know, try to, try to use equipment longer. And, and everybody, everybody knows that when somebody gives me a reason that they're, you know, replacing equipment because it just came to the end of its life, that, that they need to have a little bit more information than that to convince me of the fact that it, that, you know, that the piece of equipment has to be replaced. I mean, one year, they even brought me over and showed that there was, there was a rusted hole in the, in the bottom one of the pickup truck, or not the pickup truck, yeah, one of, one of the vehicles, maybe it was a, one of the, the trucks. But at any rate, so even though it, it, it is a situation where we don't like to see those costs go up, I, I think we do a pretty good job, so.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So this is the opportunity now, I'm going to open, thank you, Brenda, I'm sorry. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and if there's anybody who'd like to speak on this topic, is welcome to do so at this time. You just can go up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you get up to three minutes. Is there anybody that wants to speak? All right. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. And then, Council, if you noticed on the screen, we have three separate resolutions, so I don't know who wants to take the first one. Okay.
I.
I will do Councilmember Garza, and then you can do.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-170, Resolution adopting the 2024 Property Tax Levy Collectible in 2025.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Garza. Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Second by Councilmember Kamada. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Who would like to do number three? Councilmember Kamada?
I move to adopt Resolution 2024-171, Resolution adopting the 2025 budget.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Kamada. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Garza. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, number four.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt Resolution 2024-179. This is a resolution adopting the 2024 Housing and Redevelopment Authority Property Tax Levy Collectible in 2025.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kamada. Again, final, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff, for, and Brenda, thank you for putting it all together. And you'll have a little vacation here, and then you get to come back and start it all over again. Sounds good. Next on our agenda is bid awards, number 10, which there aren't on this evening. 11 is the regular agenda. We do have one item on our regular agenda this evening, which is the Park High School site plan review. And our community development director, Emily Schmitz, is going to take us through this.
Would you like me and David to start singing Christmas music? We can do that.
Please don't.
I was gonna say, it's just freezing on me, Mayor.
We'll all blame Brenda. She was the last one to touch it.
All right, crisis.
There we go.
My apologies.
See, we threatened to sing, and all of a sudden it works.
Yeah, I know. That's all it took. That's all it took. Mayor, council members, this evening, as most of you know, the school district did have a successful referendum in 2023, therefore several projects across the county. However, a couple also here in Cottage Grove. For those of you who hold a PhD in your back pocket, I think you're thinking, oh, my goodness, finally, as we look at Park High School and a couple of improvements. So the site plan before you this evening, it's a little bit twofold. So a couple of building additions. One, the cafeteria on the rear of the building is, by understanding, the cafeteria as it sits today is existing from when the building was built. So it's been around for a couple of years and is in need of a brand-new cafeteria. So that addition, number 19, as you can see on the screen, is a brand-new cafeteria. The second building addition is also to the CTE, or the Career Technical Education portion of the building, where they're expanding to have some additional opportunities for students to build sheds, larger projects that they'll be able to work into that area, and that's number 16 on your screen. Now, this site plan looks a little bit different. Park High and Crestview, the site is quite large. So the minor scale of the addition, when we think about the site plan review from a zoning perspective, obviously, we usually look at parking, we look at landscaping, we look at all those details. But I really wanted to focus on the architectural materials as the minor impact of this addition to the site as a whole, but making sure that I highlighted that the school district did place a large focus on making sure that this addition blended into the existing building as it is today. As you can see, 78% total of that bricklazing and stone, which are those Class I materials that we typically require on commercial projects within the community. So a couple of great renderings, just so you can see that addition in the backside of the building. On my next slide, it's kind of that second part of the site when we look at the site improvements, and this is kind of the flow and the access to the site. So what I'll highlight is adding an additional access off of 80th. For most of you who know, again, who have that PhD in your pocket or have, have students that attend Park High School, a lot of that activity right now is right in the front of Park High School. And so the, the large focus of the school district was to see if we couldn't separate all of that activity into different locations within the site. So adding an access off of 80th is one of the first steps. That helps to separate traffic coming from both the east and the west into their own accesses into the site. That gives some additional stacking for folks who are dropping off at Crestview Elementary, right? Gives some additional area for those folks to stack on the site, not onto 80th Street. And then the biggest change that you're going to see is that drop-off for kids to park is going to be in the backside of the building as opposed to the front. So that goes back to that activity that you see in the front. We're proposing to split that out. So your bus traffic will continue to be in the front. School drop-off or, or student drop-off will be in the back. Student parking will remain in the student parking lot that they have today. And then you've got guest and staff, staff parking in the front that is also there today. But some additional parking obviously proposed on the backside of the building. So that also sends that traffic out onto Ideal Avenue, exiting onto 80th. Again, separating out all of that traffic activity that we see right now directly onto 80th, we're spreading that out across the site. And finally, we are working with the school district to obtain easements that are needed to cover different utilities that exist on the site today, to make sure that any of that public infrastructure the city does have access to in the event that we would need to maintain it. In addition, some additional required right-of-way along 80th Street that we needed to encompass. If you're aware, there's an existing trail that extends along 80th Street. We wanted to be certain that, that was within our right-of-way, so again, we could maintain long-term. So with that, there are two separate recommendations before you. Staff is available, as well as the applicant with additional questions.
All right. Thank you, Emily. Council, if you have any questions at this point? Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. This might be for Ryan, and it might be for the applicant, so whoever wants it can take it. When we saw this presentation, one of the things we talked about was the safe crossing areas on Hinton and on Ideal. And I wondered if somebody could just spend a moment sharing with the public what will be changing in those areas to ensure that, you know, the, the crossing for those who walk will actually be safe. And I, in fact, I believe it'll be safer because I think we're going to take a lot of that traffic off of Ideal.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson, so looking at Ideal specifically, you're right, a lot of it is, is probably less traffic, just because hearing the school district's numbers, the, the parent drop-off pickup, I think averaged somewhere around 150 on different days they checked, where the student parking lot holds about 450 cars. So you should actually have less traffic on Ideal Avenue. We are looking at with more of a marked crosswalk at, I believe it's 79th Street.
Yeah, it is. It's 79th, and that's.
And Ideal Avenue.
That's been the sore spot for quite a while.
Yep. So we will be looking at that. Over at Hinton Avenue, really, the designated crosswalk is at the, the signal at 80th Street because that is a controlled intersection, that is the safest place to cross. I believe that's where the school district has their crossing guards as well. So that, that's remaining the same as the designated crossing, and really with the signal there, that is the best option. Over the years, discussions come up at 79th there, but that is not a, a good crossing point, being that undivided four lane is just not an ideal location to be crossing for children. So directing them down to 80th is still the proposed plan.
Good. And then, since I have you standing there, you know, one of the other challenges that we faced was when people are coming into the ice arena and they're, they're moving at a pretty good rate of speed past the front of the arena towards the back parking, there were some changes to, to that area as well to try to mitigate some of those concerns. Do you feel comfortable speaking about those?
I think those, maybe I'd let the applicant speak to a little bit. They're more familiar. I do know there's been some striping changes, some changes there, but maybe if they have any additional to add, I'll let them discuss that one.
Yeah. Something to kind of keep the, keep the traffic. Go ahead, please. Yes.
Yep.
So my name's Kevin Bowle. I'm a civil engineer working on the project with PKBM Engineers.
Thank you.
Ultimately, yeah, we, we are going to have the additional parking on the backside of the school, which we think is going to help alleviate some of the congestion on the south side of the school. We anticipate that, you know, after-school activities or once school lets out, it'll be used for, you know, practice for football and whatever on the north fields, but then also used kind of for the ice arena parking and kind of eliminating some of that traffic on the south side there, so.
The, the concern that most people have and have had for quite some time is, let's say you have a, a big game, and I'll use, Park is going to play Eastridge this week on Friday night. Eastridge Home Ice is at the arena, Park's Home Ice at the arena, so when they play each other, they play at the arena. It's just a question of which sheet of ice. When the buses come to drop off the teams, they park right in front of that arena. And then when you have parents who are driving to drop off their players or people who want to come to the game and, you know, hey, drop us off at the front and we'll go park someplace kind of thing, that, that, you know, right in front of the arena, that traffic going either way is problematic. And sometimes people move at a pretty rapid rate of speed. I've seen our law enforcement officers on several occasions actually ticket people for, for their behavior behind the wheel in that area. So do you anticipate some of these changes are going to mitigate that? Is it going to, you know, slow some of that down? Or is there anything else that you're aware of that may be going on?
Yeah, I guess, not specifically to that, that drive itself. You're talking about the drive directly between the ice arena and the high school.
Yes.
There may There may be some level of less congestion of people who are trying to go north to that parking area as they can now enter through the Crestview side of it.
Through the backside.
Similarly, there's the access off of Ideal. So, you can kind of loop around to the north, if that makes sense, instead of cutting straight through the center. So, there's probably some congestion relief because of that. But ultimately, there's no anticipated speed bumps or anything added in that area.
Okay. Well, the reality is, that was only the, that was the only way people could get in and out. So, now that they have a different access point, that may make a big change. But I just wanted to ask the question because we are approaching, you know, tonight's the first game, right? So, and the girls played last night. So, it's gonna be that time of year. And we want to try to make sure that we plan forward for next year and the year after and the year after. Thank you. That's it for me, Mayor.
Okay. I will have a question, but does any other council member have a question for either staff or, and I'll probably have one of you to get up there again in a second. Councilmember Kamada.
I will just comment that when this was being presented at the planning commission meeting, which I am the council member, or the council liaison for, a question that I had, which was brought up by one of the planning commission members, was how would you restrict traffic, right? So, now, people are, who are dropping off their children are supposed to come around the back of the building. How do you prevent them from going through the bus lane and continuing to cause congestion? And they said that they have planned to address that with using some cones to blockade vehicles and that that's been an effective method at other schools where they have to manage, you know, those two different types of traffic.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other questions down here? So, I have two questions, and both of them were brought up during our workshop that we had, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. One was, and I think I even heard our Public Parks and Rec Director brought it up. And it does involve that area between the ice arena and the school. One is lighting. At the moment, the lighting over there is really, it's dark with regards to lighting. And I guess I'd like to put a plug in, no pun intended. Because I know we have some on the ice arena itself, but it doesn't really get out to the, I'll say, the travel lane or lanes that go by there. And then, of course, there's very limited lighting on the school, which actually doesn't really push down towards the sidewalk there. So, I would like to just put that out there as something that we should look at. And then, of course, the other one, and I brought it up that night, and I'll bring it up again here. You know, parking has been a premium at that school. And, you know, Councilmember Olson brings up the comment about, you know, if there's a, both, and it does happen, both high schools, even if they're not playing each other, they might be playing at the same time. Plus, there's basketball at the high school. And so, when those events happen, parking is at a premium. And literally, figuratively, you could be parking, I'm not kidding, on Ideal to walk all the way to the ice arena or basketball, whatever. One of the, and not that this is gonna be the biggest of deals, but one of the things that was initially in your first plan was that used to be a warming hall sets behind the ice arena was going to be moved. I know you're using it for storage for like the field facilities and that. And that was gonna be additional parking. And I believe that the reason that it was removed is cost factors. Is that accurate? So, with that being said, I know what we do at the city is when there's a budget, which you have to have a budget, just like we do, if they do add-ons, if you will, or what word am I looking for? Contingency or a change order, I'm sorry. A change order where you could actually say, okay, I'm gonna bid this project out. And depending on how the costs come back, we can, you know, we can do a change order, which would be a possibility of somebody adding, like, the parking on the back there. And I just know it because it's been, between the lighting and the parking all around the high school, it's been a challenge. And I do appreciate what you guys are doing. I like the idea. I like the design that you're trying to do and to split things up so there isn't so much craziness in the mornings at, you know, getting into the high school. But I would just like to make my plug once again for those two items. One is the lighting on the high school. And then, of course, the, you know, looking at what we can do with some additional parking. And if you need to work with our staff, obviously, on placement of a new, you know, shed or a building, obviously, I'm sure we could, we could work with you on that to make it. I know you had it at another spot at one point. I'm not sure because of how the fields are working out that it had to be moved, or maybe it was us. I don't know. But I'm just saying, let's see what we can do to work together to increase the parking opportunities there, but also provide you with the needed space that you need for sheds. So, and I would assume council feels pretty confident down there.
Absolutely.
I know we brought it up during the workshop. So, okay. And did you, either of you want to say anything else, or three of you, I guess?
No.
Yeah, I saw you hiding over there. All right. All right. So, council, this is not a, this is just on our regular agenda. So, there isn't like a public hearing or anything. Was there anybody in the audience that did want to speak on this topic at all by chance? Okay.
Mayor, I'll move Resolution 2024-177, approving the site plan review for two additions to Park High School located at 8040 80th Street South, totaling approximately 35,000 square feet and additional site improvements to property located at 8040 80th Street South and 7830 80th Street South.
All right. So, I have a motion by Councilmember Olson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Kamada. Any further discussions, council? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And who would like number two?
All right. I'll move that we approve drainage and utility easements, right-of-way easement, encroachment agreement, and a stormwater maintenance agreement on property located at 8040 and 7830 80th Street South.
Right. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Thede. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Garza. Final time. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. And there'll be a lot of construction going on up there later this next year. So, next on our agenda is council comments and requests. I'll start with Councilmember Kamada.
Thank you, Mayor. I am so excited to go and skate on a frozen pond beside myself. However, the ice is not thick enough. And so, I'm just gonna make a quick PSA that it sounds like we had a close call in Woodbury just a couple of days ago with a couple of teenagers who went through the ice. And I know that there's been at least one or two other reports. If you go on the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, which is DNR.state.mn.us, they have a nice pictograph explaining how thick the ice needs to be to stand on it, drive on it, snowmobile on it. Please be safe. Don't go through the ice trying to have fun with your kids. That's all I've got for today.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kamada. How about Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that Christmas is your favorite time of year. So, I'm certainly not going to steal any of your thunder because there's a whole bunch of Christmas going on. But one thing that I did want to mention is this coming Sunday, the 8th of December, we have got our Santa breakfast for the Cottage Grove Lions, not to be confused with the Santa breakfast that is taking place at River Oaks. Santa's amazing. He can be in two places at once. But this one is for the Cottage Grove Lions from 8:00 AM until noon at the Big Red Barn VFW here in Cottage Grove. Santa will be there along with Sparkles the Elf. And you might see some familiar faces wearing their lion's gear as we're trying to serve some breakfast and drinks. And there'll be all kinds of fun things going on. The admission price is $12 for adults. It is $8 for children. And we would love to see you there. There is no rule that says you can't go to both. So, if you're already planning on going to River Oaks, I know that that was a order-your-tickets-in-advance sort of event. This is a pop-in-whenever-you-can sort of event. So, from 8:00 to noon, we'll be there. You have your fun at River Oaks, and then, you come and see us. And we'll put a little strawberry on top of the sundae for you, and it'll be just a beautiful day. You get to see Santa twice. So, I look forward to having a really nice crowd there. Again, Sunday, 8:00 to noon at the VFW, $12 for adults, $8 for kids. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Thede.
I'm good.
Ooh, wow. Okay. Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, just hopping on what Brenda gave us a lot of great information regarding our taxes here in Cottage Grove and how we're spinning our budget and all the things, I just want to give a friendly reminder to any of our new residents to Cottage Grove that may have purchased a home in 2024. Make sure that you have Homestead at your home because that will help you with your taxes. So, if you have not, or if you do not know, you can check with Washington County, I believe, online, or you can give them a call. So, that's a really good and important thing to do before the end of the year if you purchase this year. Thank you.
Good call out. Thank you. All right. So, as Councilmember Olson said, though, this evening, the wind is going nuts out there. And yes, a lot of my Christmas decorations are flying everywhere in my yard, even though they're staked. But yeah, it's not a pretty night for Christmas decorations outside. But staff is telling me that they've already talked to Mother Nature and tomorrow night, when we have our hometown holiday celebration here at City Hall. I encourage you to come, check out all the events. The last couple of years that we've been doing, it's gotten bigger and better every year. Matter of fact, and yes, the wind is, the tent's up out here, and it's holding very well. But there's a lot of decorations here at City Hall. Staff has done a great job of putting things together. Just as a friendly reminder, there's gonna be food trucks out here, games. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be arriving. And then, we'll do an official tree lighting for the city of Cottage Grove, I believe, at 5:00 o'clock. And then, there'll be some other decorations, some music, and things that are gonna be happening out here. City Hall will be open. I think you might have heard that earlier. So, if it is colder than what Minnesota would say is normal right now, there is a chance for you to stop inside here to City Hall and warm up if necessary, though we'll do have warming tents and such out in front of City Hall.
Are we gonna have the Christmas movies again? Okay.
There you go.
Yeah. So, Christmas movies in the.
Inside. There you go. So, like I said, it's a great event. It is tomorrow evening, which is, depending on who you're watching, this Thursday, December 5th. You can start arriving as early as 4:30. There'll be parking at both the Washington County Government Center and the Hero Center. And you can take a wagon ride that will be provided from one of those locations to get you here to City Hall. And then, you can take a ride back at that particular point. I was already gonna mention, interestingly enough, the River Oaks Santa breakfast is completely sold out. So, whether you're doing both or now that you don't have the option at River Oaks, we definitely want you to go down to do the Santa breakfast at the VFW for the Cottage Grove Lions. So, we encourage you to do that. And then, this coming, I think it's Saturday, isn't it? December 7th? Yeah. On December 7th, there is what we call a Help Us Fill Up the Fire Truck event. And in the past, in Cottage Grove here, we've done it actually at some of our parks or maybe Cup Foods or different places around town. However, this year, they've decided they're going to do it down at the Friends in Need Food Shelf in St. Paul Park. And the purpose, of course, is because all the proceeds and such that are done through this event is going to be provided to the Friends in Need Food Shelf to support families in need. You might be asking, what are they looking for? Well, first of all, I should mention, it's Saturday, December 7th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And again, it's at 535 Fourth Street in St. Paul Park. It's kind of down behind Carboni's, for those of us that know St. Paul Park down there. So, I'll mention that. And then, the items that they're really looking for, which is, which is great, is toilet paper, paper towels, toothpaste, toothbrushes, diapers in sizes four, five, and six, plastic and paper bags, deodorant, baby wipes, shampoo, and bar soap. Or I would also suggest cash if you're so willing and able to do it because obviously, that goes a long way if you can't provide or don't want to provide those items. And it will also give you a chance to take a tour. And that was part of the reason they're doing it down there. So, other than stopping and filling the fire truck, you can actually take a tour of the food shelf and see how they manage to put many, many, many people through there to support those in our communities, Cottage Grove and surrounding communities for that. So, again, that's this coming Saturday, December 7th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Friends in Need Food Shelf in St. Paul Park. And then, lastly, I did want to mention about next Wednesday, which is December 11th. We do have the CPKC Holiday Train that is gonna be back in town here right along West Point Douglas Road near the U.S. Service Bureau. It is an amazing event. If you haven't seen it, I encourage you to swing down there. There is warming tents. There's going to be Santa, free glow sticks, cookies and cocoa, which is also free. Obviously, it's limited quantities. But there, again, there'll be food trucks. There's gonna be Holiday Train merchandise with all the proceeds obviously going to the Friends in Need Food Shelf, which is what this event is. It is amazing to see it. There is music that comes with the train. So, a stage opens up, and I encourage you to stop down there. Again, it starts as early as 3:30 when the event starts opening. The train is expected to arrive around 5:15. It's usually here about 15 to 20, 25 minutes tops, and then, it moves on out. So, again, this is, I believe, our goal, and I'm looking to another partner of mine on the board, is 100,000, I believe, this year. And if we do achieve that 100,000, I believe, is it 2 million or 3? Over $2 million would have been raised for just in the stop, which, by the way, from what we're hearing from the CPKC rail, is one of the biggest and most profitable stops that they have. In other words, for donating to the local community. So, that's pretty amazing, both for our communities, our members of our communities, as well as all of the local businesses that help bring this to town. And so, that is why they're back again, is we're one of their biggest stops. We're one of their best stops. And they do really appreciate all the love and support that they get from the communities of Cottage Grove, St. Paul Park, Newport, and Gray Cloud. And so, that is it for my notes for me. And oh, I guess I should say, there is, hopefully, everything will still be out there, but there is the Holiday Lights Tour, which you can go to our website and our Facebook page, and you can download the map. And it'll literally take you to everyone, as long as you want to do it, throughout Cottage Grove. Last I saw, I think there was over 50 homes that are currently signed up. Yes, mine is one of them. Hopefully, it'll still be intact after this evening. But it is pretty amazing for what people are doing out in our community with holiday decorations. So, I encourage you to do that. Oh, and I guess I do have one more. I'm sorry, council. Our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfine, just mentioned to me that one of the things that I did mention in my mayor's moments on our local cable access is we're gonna be trying out, if you will. We're gonna be putting up four different Christmas decorations on streetlights that are gonna be down on Jamaica, basically between Highway 61 and, say, Taco Bell in that particular area. And there's gonna be a number or a letter, I'm not, because I'm not sure if it's a number or a letter, on each of them for you to vote on which of those particular decorations that you would like to see in Cottage Grove in the future. And the reason is, is some of the decorations that we currently have are getting older. And some of them, the lights aren't working anymore. And so, our goal will be to start replacing them. And of course, with the new lights that we've got down in the Jamaica Avenue area by Target, those also require different brackets and things like that, too. So, we are gonna need to upgrade some of these. And this is gonna be your opportunity to help us choose. Last time we did this, the public, I thought, loved it. We got a lot of response from the public about which ones they liked or didn't like. And we'll get the information from the public later on as we get closer to Christmas. And we'll share with everybody what the selection is. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. So, stay tuned. In the next week or so, you'll see the information go out there. And you'll see, obviously, the decorations go up shortly. Okay? So, that is it. Next is workshop open to the public. We do not have a workshop open to the public this evening. However, we do have a workshop which is closed to the public. And this year is the time that we do our Administrator Jennifer Levitt's performance review. So, I will just mention to the public in here on camera that we will be closing the meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05, subsection 3A, to conduct a performance evaluation of City Administrator Jennifer Levitt. And then, once we're completed with that, we will then adjourn at that point. So, look forward to seeing everybody at the holiday, hometown holiday event tomorrow evening. And then, again, next week at the Holiday Train. So, take care, everyone.